We're on?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to bring the meeting to order. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Next is, I'd like to note that Commissioner Bocelli is going to be absent today. The rest of the Commissioners are present. And Mr. Maurer, are there any agenda changes?
We have no agenda changes. I just want to note that Item E1, the map extension, will be continued, but we'll need to take an action to continue it when that item comes up. The appellant, or the applicant, has agreed to a continuance. So we've got some minor issues that need to work out. And if anyone's here for the public on that, they have an opportunity to speak, or they can wait to speak when it's brought back.
Okay. Okay. Then we will go right into public comment. Public comment is five minutes. And it's not a topic that's on the agenda, so you can please come up to the mic.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Virginia Franklin. I've been trying to get a due process hearing for quite a while now. Last year, I applied for a cannabis permit. Because of health issues, I wasn't able to do it by myself. So I agreed with a guy from a dispensary that he could participate. However, the way that I wrote the application was as a corporation. And it's actually two corporations, and I'm the sole incorporator of both of them. Although I allowed him to act as signatory on one because he was supposed to be developing a collective in conjunction. But as time went on, this group of people were violating the urgency ordinance. They weren't in compliance. They were doing a lot of illegal things. And so I told them, "I'm going to remove you from the application because I don't want to be responsible. It's my property." I was the business license person, the Board of Equalization. Everything was in my name, the owner of the property. So at some point, I came to the Planning Department and said, "Look, I'm going to probably have to abate this thing because these people are way out of line. And I'm having difficulty getting it back on track." And I was told, "Hey, that's your own problem. You should have checked these guys out better. Anyway, he's the applicant, not you." And I said, "Well, no. Actually, I'm the sole applicant, and as per your 72-hour rule, I'm removing him as signatory. I'm the sole incorporator. He was an officer that was given permission to act as a signatory, and now I'm removing that." And they said, "Well, you can't do that." So I went back, and I looked over my paperwork and realized, "Of course I can do that. I'm the sole incorporator." And I called the state of California. They sent me a wet-stamped document stating, "Yes, I'm still the sole incorporator" as of that date. I brought it into the county, to the Planning Department. They refused to acknowledge it, so I sent an email and said, "As per the 72-hour rule, I'm removing this guy." Well, somehow, they also got to the Sheriff Department and said, "We want her removed from her property." The sheriffs came out. They had made some false statements. Luckily, I had a security camera that captured the whole thing. They claimed I was pointing guns at them and doing all this kind of stuff, which the sheriff realized after looking at the footage that never took place. So I then went, while the sheriff was there, they said, "We're enforcement officers, and we're here to inspect your farm." And when they were there, I said, "As enforcement officers, I can't get the Planning Department to work with me. I want the place abated. I'm done." And they said, "Okay. We'll be back in two days," to cut everything down because they realized they came out there on false pretenses from a false complaint. And so then, two days later, I called them and said, "Well, when are you going to be here?" And they said, "Well, save yourself the money and just cut it down yourself." So I did. I went, first I filed a restraining order. Then, as per the judge's minute order, I went ahead and cut everything down and cleaned it up. Then Josh Crabtree came out and said, "Yes, you know, you've removed all the stuff and all that." And so I kept waiting for some kind of a document from enforcement saying, you know, "We're shutting you down for these reasons," or whatever it is they give everybody. I don't know. I've only seen it online. And then, I went down to Southern California for a month, was in the hospital, came back, and I kept calling people, saying, "When's this paperwork going to come through?" And it never did. Then I found out in May that I was still on a list of growers. And I came back to the Planning Department and said, "Could you please get me off of this list?"
Okay, you're over the five minutes.
Okay. So I'd like a hearing. You know, I'll pay the $500. I want the date of my abatement to reflect the true date of my abatement.
Okay. So you have to take care of that at the Planning Department? That can't be done here?
I've been, they've just ignored me.
Okay. So I don't know-
I'm allowed due process. It's a constitutional right.
Okay. The five minutes is up, and I have to move on to the next public comment, and you need to take this up in the Planning Department, okay? I'm sorry.
Well, you've left me with nothing because they've, they're railroading me. They refuse to acknowledge-
Okay, I have to stop you. Thank you. I'm sorry.
The Planning Commission isn't for me-
You are no separate than any other person in this room that gets five minutes for public comment.
Yeah, except they get a hearing.
Please sit down. Please sit down. Thank you. Okay. Is there any other public comment?
Well, on that note, Happy New Year.
Thank you.
And glad to see you all back, except for one. And I hope Commissioner Bocelli comes back. We appreciate the work you do. It's a hard job, but we appreciate it, and we think you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Any other public comment? Okay, thank you. So we will, there is no consent agenda today, so we're going to go right into our public hearings. And the first one is extension of time for a tentative subdivision tract map. And I think, Peter, you were going to speak to that?
Yes, we had, well, we requested that the applicant agree to continue this while we work out some issues regarding the ownership of the property. The applicant agreed to that continuance. I have email from them and writing. We've requested it be continued for a month to a date certain. I believe that the date is February 20th, whatever the second meeting of February is. But if there's anyone here in the audience that wants to speak to this, you could speak to it now or come back at a time when we actually hold the hearing. But the decision right now is not whether to grant the extension, but whether to approve the continuance for one month.
Okay. So is there a public comment? Okay.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Maurer, for showing me where I'm going here since this morning, and first time I've been here. My name is Glenn Sewell. My wife and I, Janice, live at 2692 Shoshone Drive, which is right behind, the property is right behind us. And so I'm representing my cells and neighbors next door to us. But I wanted to leave you with some pictures and just describe a bit-
Okay. So today, we're speaking on whether we want to continue this or not. So I need you to speak to that subject.
Oh, just the continuance of it?
Yeah. We're not having the hearing today, so we can't speak on that. Okay.
Okay. That's my understanding then. Based on the notice we got, I was speaking to that, so I'll just stop at that point.
Well, I think that if, because it's a noticed hearing, if the public is here to speak on this item, they should be able to speak on it. Then that would be part of the record that you have when you come back to consider it a month from now.
Sure.
The gentleman can come back next month, or if he's got a conflict, he would be able to, you know, have his testimony as part of the record at this point in time.
Okay. So I'm going to have you hold on just one second because I need some clarity for my own purposes. So when we are looking at this, we're not having the hearing?
Well, there's no action being taken today.
Okay.
But because we have a noticed public hearing, if the gentleman were willing to just hold on to his comments and come back a month from now, that would probably be cleanest because Commissioner Bocelli would be here, and everyone would have the benefit of his testimony. If, for some reason, he's unable to attend a continued meeting and really needed to have his public comments made today, then I think we should, we should take it in and with the understanding that no decision would be made today. But if he's able to come back, that would be preferable.
I can do that as long as I get a little notice of when that meeting will be-
Well, we're, the notice, we're notifying right now, it'll be nine o'clock on the fourth, or the second Thursday of the, whatever, whatever it is a month from, approximately a month-
It's the 22nd.
22nd. Okay. Yeah, I can hold off and come back then.
22nd, okay.
Okay. So you do have the right, I mean, what we were doing right now was saying that we're discussing a continuance, and you have the right to say that I don't want you to continue with this, or I do? So-
Well, no, we're not going to, you know, object to that or anything like that.
Okay.
That's no big deal. I just want, I think we'll wait a month and come back when you're here at that time, and I can express some of the concerns we have-
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
No, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any other public comment on this particular project? Okay. Then I'll close public comment, bring it back to the Commissioners to, do you need a vote to continue it to the next date? Okay. So I'm going to need-
I'll move that we continue it to, is it February 22nd?
Yes. Okay.
This matters to September, February 22nd.
Can I get a second? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries for zero. Okay. So we will move on to Item Number Two, 2016-932. And Madeline, I'm assuming that you're going to be presenting on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning. Madeline Sanjo, Planner Two. Today, I am presenting the Appeal 2016-932 for Robert and Sherri Schaefer. On July 11th, 2016, Robert and Sherri Schaefer submitted an application for 14,375 square feet of mixed-lite commercial medical cannabis cultivation for their site located at 5855 Clements Place in Valley Springs. This is APN 070-009-009. On five separate occasions, Calaveras County Animal Services was called to 5855 Clements Place for various issues related to the Schaefer's dogs, including aggressive activity and entering neighbors' properties. The dates were December 18th, 2015, March 1st, 2016, March 14th, 2016, April 6th, 2016, and June 7th, 2017. And I believe you have all the Animal Services activity cards for those five dates. On the June 7th, 2017 date, that Animal Services visited the site, the Schaefer's were cited by Animal Services for three violations, two for a lack of licensing, which is a violation of County Code 614.020, and one for animal control, which is a violation of 6.10.010. On that date, Sherri Schaefer signed the notice to appear for a hearing that was scheduled for July 24th, 2017. But according to the courts, the July 24th, 2017 hearing did not occur. So at the time of the denial, which was August 3rd, 2017, the registrants were in violation of 1795.170.a.2, as the registrant was in violation of the control laws and lack of licensing on five separate occasions. So a hearing did occur with the courts on August 14th, 2017, which the Schaefer's were present for, during which the courts dismissed the first two violations for lack of licensing because Mrs. Schaefer presented her receipts showing that she had proof of corrections. The receipts were dated June 21st, 2017, for payment for, I believe, three dog licenses. The third item for the control law was continued. And on August 18th, 2017, the Schaefer's appealed their denial. And we were here September 14th, 2017, a public hearing for you Commissioners to present the appeal. But the item was recommended for continuance of calendar by staff until the appellant's criminal proceedings were resolved regarding that final third animal control violation. So there was a trial for that third violation on November 6th, 2017, during which Judge Healy found Mrs. Schaefer guilty of an infraction for violation of Chapter, Calaveras County Code 6.10.010. And though this is a singular conviction, the numerous complaints from neighbors and the testimony of the animal control officers handling the case indicated that this is an emblematic of a pattern of conduct. Therefore, the prior denial stands based on this single conviction. And I'm not sure if Animal Services is here, but I believe the appellant is here today. But that's all I have.
Okay. With the appellant, I'd like to have them speak.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There's really not much I can say. I was, they found that it was a control issue. So I don't really have a defense against that. There was proof he was in the neighbor's garage. And the only defense I have for him was he was a puppy, and we were trying to train him, and he did get away from us. But, you know, and that was, it was a while back. But I see on paper how it, you know, how it shows that there was an issue. There hasn't been since. We've put all things in place. We've put up fences. There's dog pen now. There's things. We had just moved to the property during this time, too. So that's the only thing I can say about that.
Does anybody have any questions? Do any of the Commissioners have questions? No? Okay. Well, then, if you have nothing further to say, none of the Commissioners have questions, can I go to the public and see if there's anybody here from the public for comment?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this appeal?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Colleen Platt with MyValleySprings.com and the Calaveras Planning Coalition. Two, two things, two points we'd like to make here, basically. We support the denial of this appeal for two separate reasons. The first is the reason given in the, in the planning report. There is violation of animal control laws on five separate occasions. This required five different visits from animal control officers over a period of a year and a half. It wasn't just a one-time thing. This happened over a period of time, despite repeated requests by the animal control officers, as you can read in the service reports. The owner did not seem to accept the necessity of complying with these animal control laws until they were actually cited and forced to go to court and pay the fines. So this seems to us to show a pattern of conduct, as the staff report said, of noncompliance for a year and a half, which is not a desirable state of mind for somebody looking for cannabis registration. So we support denial on those, the disregard for county laws in additional to the violations cited here. We also support denial of this registration on other grounds, which we've brought up before at the September 14th hearing, public hearing on this matter. This cannabis grow conflicts with the County General Plan and the Rancho Calaveras Special Plan. We submitted documentation on that to the Planning Commission and the Planning Department on September 12th, and this was discussed at the September 14th hearing. And this is just a copy of our previous comment. We request that the Planning Commission consider additional grounds to deny this application. As we stated before, commercial land use and commercial operations are not allowed in Rancho Calaveras. Rancho Calaveras Special Plan is an adopted part of the general plan, and it's county, it's county law to enforce. This cannabis commercial activity is out of compliance with the general plan, and we feel that's grounds right there to deny. This conflict was brought up at the September 14th meeting. And at that meeting, the planning directors agreed that this, the urgency ordinance was in error, and growing cannabis commercially is inconsistent with the general plan. This was discussed at that meeting. And also, at that hearing on September 14th, County Council present at the time, it was Sarah, I don't know her last name, but that County Council, and you can listen to this on video. She said, "The Planning Commission can independently consider other possible grounds for denial, independently of the Planning Director. And you would be able to add other grounds if you found it appropriate." It's up to you, but she said that was a possibility for you. At that time, Commissioners Sisk, Commissioner Ladish, and Commissioner Wooster asked Planning to consider and look at whether the ordinance and special plan issue could be kind of a local law that they could find a violation of as grounds for denial.
Colleen, it's reaching the five-minute mark, and they forgot to set the timer, but I was watching the clock, so-
I'm sorry.
Just letting you know.
Okay. I will speed this up. So we just, this hasn't been addressed. This question wasn't addressed. So please address the request of the Commissioners and our request to look at this issue and consider adding grounds for denial that commercial land use conflicts with the Rancho Plan and the general plan as additional reasons. This has fallen through the cracks before. We've asked over and over for this to be addressed. Three registrations have been allowed, and one has been permitted in Rancho. It's operating. We need the Planning Commission to deny this registration, application, and analogy inconsistency. We can't count on political ordinances, which change here and there and voter initiative ballots, to protect us. We need you to say that this is not allowed in Rancho. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment on this one? Okay. I'm going to have Animal Control Services come up. Do you have a statement to make?
So we went to court, and she was found guilty. But I do need to add that since I cited her months ago, she has been in complete compliance with everything. And she has made every attempt to keep her dogs licensed, rabies vaccinated, and to keep us happy, not just with her dogs, but with the other animals she has. It did take a long time to get her into compliance as far as animals went. But that was because we had several different officers working on it, and it was hard to make contact with her to start with.
Can I have you say your name for the record?
My name's Rebecca Andal.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so you're happy that she's in compliance now, but it did take a year and a half to get into compliance. Is that true?
I would say it took about a year and a half to get into compliance. That was because we had officers that started working on it and left the department. I made contact with her, cited her right away, and since then, she's been in compliance the entire time.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
We have activity cards here, I guess, five different activity cards. Do each of those indicate a lack of control?
Yes. Each of those indicate a lack of control.
That you're satisfied that the dogs were outside her property and on other people's property on each of these occasions?
Yes.
I don't know. Maybe at some point, it was just one dog, perhaps multiple dogs?
So it's under my understanding that there was a, multiple occasions where there was two dogs outside. Unfortunately, in the transfer of officers, the pictures that were provided to those officers at the time did not transfer over to me when I took the case. So I never actually saw those pictures. I cited strictly off the one picture I got from my reporting party.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I have a couple of questions. We do have these activity cards or copies of them?
Yes.
And I'm assuming they're accurate in what they, they say?
Can you repeat that?
Well, for example, looking at the one on December 18th of 2015, that says that Animal Control spoke with the owner of the dogs. She hasn't been letting the dogs roam anymore. That she needs to get her dogs licensed, et cetera. So would those comments be accurate insofar as what was said between the two of them?
As far as I know, those would be accurate. I was not an officer for Animal Services at that time, so I basically can only go with what the officer wrote in the notes.
Well, in a normal course of business, I would assume Animal Control writes down accurate comments.
Yes.
Okay.
I can say that the dogs were not licensed at that time. As this, I mean, I made contact with her. I cited her within 24, 48 hours, and she came in and did everything as far as licensing, compliance goes.
Well, then in March, she was told twice for her or daughter to make sure the dogs were kept home according to these cards. So that would be correct, huh?
That is correct.
Then another one in April, still not licensed. Cited for control. Okay, thank you.
That is correct, yes. Any other questions?
Are we okay? Okay, I think we're okay. And thank you for showing up. We appreciate you coming. Okay. So we will go to rebuttals, if you have any, Madeline?
I do not, but Peter, did you want to?
Well, I think the issue of the inconsistency between the ordinance and the general plan, the Rancho Special Plan, probably needs to be, it needs to be discussed. It is my opinion, I know the County Council has a different opinion on this, that the county erred in allowing applications to be filed in the Rancho area and not have something specific in the ordinance that would prohibit it in Rancho because we need to make a finding of consistency with the general plan when we adopt an ordinance. A finding of consistency with the general plan is not required for a ministerial act unless we have a specific provision in our code that says we will review ministerial permits for consistency with the general plan. And so the remedy to correct the problem would be to amend the code to bring it into conformance with the general plan. But because it was an urgency ordinance, we don't really have that ability to remedy it. I think at this point, based on the board's action yesterday, the issue is, you know, will resolve itself as no, no additional, you know, permits can be issued. I mean, you know, they banned it. We won't be allowing any commercial cultivation to occur in the future. I'm reluctant to recommend that you use that as a basis for denial of a specific application when it should be something that the county should correct the ordinance as a whole, but I don't know how to get there. So I'm sort of, I'm at a loss. And I'll turn it over to Julie. I'm sure she has something to say on the matter.
Well, I'm not prepared to say at this point that I, that I disagree. I know that there have been issues before. I don't feel, I feel like I would need to revisit my files and research what Mr. Maurer is saying before coming up with a conclusive decision. I wasn't prepared to address that issue today. I was reviewing this, forgot about what happened back in September and was looking at Animal Services. So if that is the basis that the Planning Commission is interested in denying on, I would recommend a continuance for, so I could review it.
Well, I don't, before we speak to this, I'd like to allow the appellant to come up and have her opportunity to rebuttal anything that was said by the public or staff- and have her opportunity to rebuttal anything that was said by the public or staff just now. Do you have anything further you'd like to add? Okay, okay, so then I can close it and bring it back to the commission at this point. My opinion is that because of the actions that were taken by the board of supervisors yesterday, we should probably not address it. If we were going to address it in any way, shape, or form, there's enough evidence in the file to deny this appeal based on what's in the file alone, and I would ask, and I don't think I even need to, or make a recommendation to legal counsel, that if the supervisors do go forward with bringing an initiative onto the ballot, that this get addressed through whatever ordinance they carry forward. If not, it's kind of, going there could create more problems than it's actually worth and putting staff through a lot of extra drills that may not even be necessary at this point. But that's totally up to you guys. That's what my thoughts are.
What's the zoning at this parcel?
Rancho Calaveras, the zoning has to be a little...
I have rural residential?
It's either RR or RA, and Madeline's confirmed it's RR.
R1?
No, it's not R1.
RR.
It's rural residential, RR.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
And so, the conflict, I suppose, that arises under the urgency ordinance is that urgency ordinance seems to allow cultivation in RR zones.
Correct.
But it also says you can invalidate for other violations of federal, state, or local law. And so, the problem arises because the local law is internally inconsistent with the zoning. The urgency ordinance saying one thing in terms of being able to grow in an RR and also saying you can be denied for a violation of local law, which in a sense you are when you're cultivating in violation of a specific plant. So I don't see any simple way to fix this other than changing the code.
Right.
I mean, I tend to sympathize with Ms. Platt that this should not be going on.
Agreed.
And I appreciate the fact that she is diligent in bringing it up. It is, it is an issue that needs to get resolved if there is a need to resolve it in the future. I think, are we into our discussion now?
Yes.
Okay. I agree with the chair that I believe that there's grounds to deny the appeal aside from the issue of the fact that this is in a special, special plan area. That's right. And I do have a question for legal counsel, and it pertains to whether we can add, add to the evidentiary paragraph, and I don't know if this is a good time to raise that or when we're discussing the resolution itself.
You mean, could you?
Yeah, what I'm wondering is, would it be appropriate for us under?
If you feel that the evidence portion of the resolution does not contain all of the evidence that has made it into the record that supports the position, you certainly can add to it based on the evidence you've received today, either through the staff report or through the testimony.
Yeah, it would just be, bringing in recurring violations in addition to the one violation that was found by the court as a criminal violation. Okay?
Right.
I'll hold off until we're talking about the resolution.
I think we're just ready to go there, are we not?
Okay.
I just want to make sure that Colleen knows that if something, because of the vote that happened last night, I tend to agree with what the board has said, but if something changes, I do think that we need to make sure that this gets put into some sort of ordinance to make sure that it doesn't happen again. I think, I think, Colleen, in the next couple, in the month ahead, if they're going to discuss ordinances, that it would be who view to show up at a supervisors' meeting and address that with the supervisors, because it's out of our hands at this point. But I would definitely take it to the supervisors and address it. You're good? Okay. So do you have other things you would like to state, or do you want to look at his changes?
I think we're ready to deal with the resolution.
Okay, let's do it.
Well, I would suggest that in the evidence paragraph under number one, that we add a sentence to that evidence paragraph that, to the effect that Calaveras County Animal Services responded five times over a period of almost 18 months to instances of registrants' animals roaming outside registrants' property and out of her control. I guess that we have multiple registrants that should be out of their control. I could repeat that, or do you want to discuss the idea first?
Well, I'm not sure that's a good idea, because the code under which we're operating deals with violations of federal, state, or local law. And the mere fact that Animal Control responds to complaints doesn't prove a violation, it just proves there was a complaint. Now, if one wanted to add additional evidence, what you would add would be the known contest pleased as dog license violations. But I don't think any of that's actually necessary.
Well, because it's documented in here that the trial was held and the outcome of that, I mean, that kind of states it for me. What do you think?
It's fine.
Do you play with that?
Yeah, I'm happy, I just wanted to raise that as an issue.
Okay.
Are we changing it, or?
I think we...
It's not.
We feel okay with it.
Unless you want to put in about the dog license.
Well, it's kind of a gray area, because she did plead no contest, or they did, but then the charges were dismissed.
Yeah.
And so, I don't know that we need to go there to try to decide whether that's a violation or isn't a violation. We have a clear violation on the control issue, so I would prefer to leave it there. The only thing I would suggest is just a matter of form on the resolution, on page one, the fourth whereas clause ought to be the second one.
I'm okay with moving that up. Is everybody else okay?
Yeah, and I have one suggestion on the, on paragraph one of the resolution. We should, the last sentence says, "A guilty verdict was issued by the court," and I think we should say, "A guilty verdict as to section 6.10.010."
I'm good with that.
Was issued.
I think that's inappropriate.
Inappropriate?
Appropriate.
Oh, I thought you said, I'm like, why is that inappropriate?
No, I think it's...
Inappropriate, inappropriate.
Try to, I'll do it again.
I think it's fine.
Okay, so are we set for the reading? We're ready.
Okay. So, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution 2017-067 as amended, denying appeal 2016-932, thereby upholding the planning director's denial of cannabis cultivation registration 2016-932.
Okay.
That was as amended, right?
Yes, as amended.
A second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay.
And this action is final on this appeal to the board of supervisors within 15 calendar days.
Thank you for coming today. Okay, so we will move into appeal number two, 2016-932. Madeline, are you handling this one as well today? Okay.
We're going to 165, right? We just did 932, right?
I'm sorry, yes, we are, 2016165. I apologize. Thank you, Karen. And I believe...
Chair, can we take a short break and allow me to talk to Peter and Julie for a second?
Yes, absolutely. We'll take a five-minute break. I bought it. I did, I took your orders. Okay, so we are going to item number three, 2016-165, appeal by Arthur Mallett, I can't even talk. Madeline, you're going to present that?
Yes.
Thank you.
One second. Okay, Madeline Flandreau, planner two. This is presentation of appeal 2016-165 for Arthur Mallett. On June 15th, 2016, Arthur Mallett submitted an application for 22,000 square feet of outdoor commercial medical cannabis cultivation on a parcel that's located at 14300 Ponderosa Way in McCallum Hill. That's APN 016-027-035. Mr. Mallett was denied for three violations of chapter 1795, including a failure to submit a complete application to the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board, failure to pass the sheriff's office background check due to a disqualifying conviction, and for failure to demonstrate lawful possession of the cultivation site prior to May 10th, 2016. Mr. Mallett submitted a notice of intent with the Central Valley Regional Water Board on September 2nd for tier one and submitted a copy of his application to the planning department. Subsequently, on May 18th, 2017, a notice of incomplete notice of intent was sent to the appellant stating that the water board staff had determined that the notice of intent was incomplete as he had selected an incorrect tier size and that a biological site assessment and cultural resources inventory were required. A notice of the notice of incomplete notice of intent was forwarded to the planning department, and according to planning department records, there was no action, no action taken to correct this, and on September 12th, 2017, a second notice was sent from the regional water board to Mr. Mallett to comply within 30 days. And according to regional water board staff, Mr. Mallett did not respond within the 30 days given. Therefore, he did not have a complete application with the regional water board. The second reason for denial, chapter 1795, 165, and 15A1 requires that all commercial medical cannabis cultivation registrants submit to fingerprints and consent to a criminal background check conducted by the Calaveras County Sheriff. Planning department received a memo from the sheriff's office on November 3rd, 2016, stating that the applicant had failed the sheriff's office background check due to a disqualifying conviction, and the planning director made a finding occurring that this prior conviction was indeed a disqualification. County code requires that all registrants provide a recorded deed or a signed and dated lease demonstrating lawful possession of the cultivation site prior to May 10th, 2016. A deed was included with Mr. Mallett's registration paperwork, however, the parcel is owned by Charlotte Woods and the lease agreement was not submitted by the registrant. Therefore, the application for commercial medical cannabis cultivation registration 2016-165 was denied on November 13th, 2017. An appeal was submitted by Mr. Mallett on November 28th, 2017. In his letter, Mr. Mallett disclosed the details of his criminal history and stated that he had been charged with a misdemeanor in 1985 and that he had served time and completed his community service. He also disclosed this criminal history in his background check questionnaire when he submitted that to the sheriff's office for his live scan, and he included a copy of a live scan that he had completed himself, so he included his entire history with his background check questionnaire. Mr. Mallett stated in his appeal that as the incident was over 30 years ago, he believes that he should not have been disqualified by the sheriff's office. The second item in his appeal letter regarding inadequate evidence of cultivation activity before May 10th, 2016 was not a reason for denial of his registration. You can see that in the denial letter in exhibit three. This was just an error on his part. With regards to the lack of complete application, Mr. Mallett stated that the parcel is owned by his mother-in-law, Charlotte Woods, and that he did not have a lease agreement with her, but during a phone call with Mr. Mallett that I had on December 15th, 2017, he stated that he did not know that he needed a lease agreement and that planning staff had not asked him for one. He also stated in his appeal letter that he had hired in an environmental consultant, Patrick GIS Group, to conduct the biological and cultural assessments to complete the requirements for the incomplete NOI with the regional water board. During the phone conversation that I had with Mr. Mallett on December 15th, 2017, he stated that he had not notified the regional water board, that he had hired the consultant, and that the consultants had yet to begin the surveys. And that's all I have for you.
Okay. Is the appellant here today?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, would you like to come up and do your presentation?
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you, when you get to the mic, please state your name for the record and say, "Thank you."
Good morning, Arthur Mallett, and I'm here for this appeal. As you lined out everything there, the sheriff denied me for something that happened over 30 years ago, I believe it was 32 years ago. It was a misdemeanor at the time, I did my time, I figured that was over with. That was a whole other life ago. I've lived in this county for a long time. Excuse me. My mother owns the land, has owned the land for over 40 years, and my mother-in-law rather, and I didn't, nobody ever told us we had to have an agreement between her and I. I mean, she's the one that said for me to go ahead and do this. That means if you want me to get a lease agreement from her, that's not a problem. I believe that I might be here a little early. I think I should have legal counsel, because I believe this is all wrong, what's been done here, to tell you the truth. As far as the water board, I got a letter here from Mr. Parker telling me to go to this website and ask for a return of my deposit to the water service, because now I have to file under a different, through the state guidelines, because everything's changed. This, I understand, was my fault because I didn't reply in time. We lost six houses in the fire, and so in this whole process, I figured, well, we got 160 acres. I got 78 acres on one parcel, two acres on another, and 80 on another. I figured if I could stay at home and work, grow this cannabis for medical people, then that would be a win for me, as I'm no longer to paint in my profession because of my neck. So, I really don't know what to do. I've invested probably, I don't even know how much money it is in this, but it's a lot. And just for a couple of, the sheriff's thing is just really ridiculous. I mean, I went to the sheriff's office, gave them my fingerprints, had them do a complete background check. It cost me money. I did that, I turned that in with my application, so I really don't know, I know that, I know that Mr. Di Basilio and I have bad blood because of past things that he has done in the past. He was involved with a shooting with my son, and so I feel therefore that I'm biased by the sheriff's department in his decision. The water board, like I say, I've talked to Mr. Parker, and he says to file under the state's new rules, so I'm not really sure what to do there. And then last night, the board of supervisors voted to make a ban, so I'm really, I don't know what's really going to go on now, so.
Okay, so just, I just want to, just for the record, for us to talk with you about your criminal record... So just, I just want to, just for the record, for us to talk with you about your criminal record, if anybody had any questions here, I just want to make sure that you're waiving your rights for us to ask questions.
Absolutely.
Okay. I just want to go on the record with making sure that you are okay with that. And the sheriff copy, sheriff gave you a copy of your criminal history and the background check? Did you receive that?
No, it came from the Department of Justice. It didn't come from the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, but you have a copy of it?
Well, it's, it's in that, it's in that application somewhere.
Okay, okay. Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and let the commissioners ask questions that they may have. I just wanted to make sure that we were okay with having discussions regarding the criminal with you.
One question I have, did you get a copy of this page that we just got this morning? I don't know if staff has given that to you.
Is this the-
It's a, it's a one-
One page with my name at number three?
Well-
No?
That doesn't look like the same, that-
No, I didn't get this.
Okay.
I'm receiving it right now.
Yeah. Why don't you take a, time to look at it?
This is incorrect. No, this is not right. What? No, this is wrong.
Okay, that's why I was asking if you had a copy, because it's always a good idea that you be able to look at it as well. Okay. What is wrong?
A firearm. A felony arrest nineteen-
It says not a firearm.
Well, no, there is firearm.
There is a firearm there.
Dismissed charge.
It says the firearm charge was dismissed.
There never was a firearm. I've never been arrested for possession of a firearm.
That may be why it was dismissed, because it was an arrest for that that wasn't correct?
This stemmed from an argument from me and my ex-girlfriend's ex-husband over childcare.
When you say this, which sentence are you-
The assault. And it's not, and it wasn't assault with a deadly weapon, it was aggravated assault. That's what I pled to. It was a misdemeanor, and I received thirty days for it. I did fifteen weekends at Mickey Grove Park at the museum, helping them redo an old building of Captain Weber.
So it says you were sentenced to a hundred and eighty days.
That's incorrect.
It is incorrect.
Yes. If I was sentenced to a hundred and eighty days, that means you're, that's a felony. So if you have a felony, you can't, you know, I wouldn't have been able to go into this business to begin with. I'm not stupid.
Okay.
Now, on the, the actual form you filled out for the sheriff to get the background check, the form that I have says, "List any and all arrests or formal charges with or without disposition for any criminal offenses within the U.S. or any other country, civilian or military." I would read that as including misdemeanors as well as felony. Would you? Or did you?
I'm not understanding your question. Can you say it again, please?
Okay. This is what, I understand this was on the form that you filled out when you did-
I don't recall the form that I had filled out, so I can't recall as to what it said. If you could produce the form, then we could go over that.
Yeah. Okay. But let's put it this way. The urgency ordinance itself states that the registration may be denied or invalidated if the sheriff finds that the applicant for the cultivation site has been convicted of any felony or misdemeanor he deems to be reasonably related to the qualifications, functions, responsibilities, or duties expected of an applicant for the type of registration he, she is applying for. And in your, I think it was in your appeal letter, you said, "Well, you didn't put down this one offense because it was a misdemeanor," and it's, it's clear from the statute and the ordinance.
Okay, let me, let me address the letter. The letter that I had written and put in here, I had that done within like ten minutes. Okay? I had my bookkeeper do that, and I wasn't clear on just exactly what they were talking about, because it didn't have this in front of me, for one. All I had was, hey, we're going to deny you because of these allegations here that, that they sent me. In the first-
But your letter said, "I didn't write it down because it was a misdemeanor." I just wanted to make clear to you that the ordinance says misdemeanors are included.
But I don't remember, I don't recall it saying a misdemeanor. I thought it said felony.
Well, the ordinance-
Want to see a copy of the ordinance?
The ordinance-
No, I don't want to see a copy of the ordinance.
The ordinance is, is what you were applying under, and people are held to know what's in the ordinance. The ordinance also requires a copy of a lease if you are not the owner of the property.
We own the property. The property's in a living trust, and so when my mother-in-law dies, my name is there, and I will own the property.
But you do not own it now.
No, I don't own it right now.
Right. It's, it's, it's just a matter of, we're, we're here enforcing an ordinance, and to do that, we have to look at the language of the ordinance. And we have to follow the ordinance, and we have to assume that people who file applications under this ordinance, that they are bound by the terms of the ordinance, and they need to be aware of what's in the ordinance.
Okay. Didn't cross the T's, didn't dot all the I's. I get that. So now you're going to penalize me for that? Is that what you're saying?
That's where the law goes, yes.
Okay. So what is our next step from here?
Well, we haven't, we haven't, I, I just-
Because it's quite obvious, I can get a little agreement, that's not a problem. This thing that happened thirty-something years ago, are you really going to hold me for that? A veteran of the Army, you're going to, you're going to hold me to this? Something had happened to me when I first got out of the service, and I was still drinking. I haven't drank anything since nineteen ninety-three, lived in this county for almost thirty years now, never had any problems. Until I tried to be legitimate and grow a cannabis crop, and now I've run into a lot of problems.
Under the terms of the ordinance, you are running into a lot of problems.
Yes.
The Water Board requirements are-
I have a letter here from them stating-
Well, I understand that, but there's-
To contact them for a refund and to file under the state's new guidelines.
But that's-
But what?
Urgency ordinance requires that you have submitted by September seventh, two thousand sixteen, all necessary documents to constitute a complete application, and that, from our record, appears you didn't do. I, I realize that the, how this may appear to you, but this is the way-
Well, it appears to me like I'm getting railroaded, because number one, the Sheriff's Department was supposed to do the background check. Later on in all of this, they said, "Oh, the Sheriff's Department, we don't have time for that now. You just come on down to the Planning Department, pick up the rest of your paperwork, and go to the various different departments and get signed off, and get your business license and go to business." So I did. I have the business license, I have all the other documents. The only thing I didn't do was the Water Department.
And with the lease?
Oh, my God, with the lease. Would you like to talk to her? She's in Arizona right now, otherwise I would have had her write a lease up.
If you-
We're living in trailers out in the burn zone, waiting to get our houses rebuilt, trying to start a business that I could work at home from, and I'm getting knocked down every time I turn around a corner. So your decision, Mr. Lattish, is?
I'm not making the decision here. I'm raising the question to see if you had an answer for how-
I'm sorry, I didn't get the paperwork done on time. There's a lot going on in my life, with rebuilding the houses, trying to get a business going.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to see if there's any questions from any of the other commissioners at this point.
Yeah. The file has a, a letter of May eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, notice from the Water Board to you. Did you get that?
May eighteen. No, I have no letter from them on May eighteenth.
Does, um, what's, what's your mailing address? Or what was it last year?
It's one four two five zero Ponderosa Way? Or one five six five one Ponderosa Way?
Okay, this was sent to one four two five zero Ponderosa Way, and you, but you don't have a copy of it, correct? Do you, do you remember whether you got it?
No, I don't.
Okay, do you, the-
We've had problems with people stealing our mail out there as well, so there's a very good possibility that somebody has stolen our mail.
The file has a reference to a phone call between you and a Mr. Parker at the Water Board sometime between-
I've had several calls with Mr. Parker.
Okay, the one I'm, the one I'm talking about was where you were discussing whether you needed to have a recent biological and cultural survey.
Correct.
Do you remember that?
Yes, because the land was, we had logged that area prior to this fire thirty years ago, and so Ross Richards was the forester. He did the cultural and biological assessment at the time. We thought, Charlotte and myself, that that was still good. Well, it comes to find out that, no, it's not good. The state wants it done every time you do something. Every time you change a crop, this is something I learned that I didn't know. If you change from one crop to another, you have to have this done. Makes no sense to me whatsoever. The land is still the same. The crop is a crop.
Now, in this, in one of these calls, did Mr. Parker tell you that you had to have a recent one, a survey?
He did, and that's why I contacted the, the lady from the G.I.S. Services to contact the, to conduct the, the survey.
When did you make that contact?
That's, um, do you remember what I told you, Madeline?
I don't see a date in the appeal letter.
And I just didn't-
The appeal letter doesn't have a date?
I don't think it does.
Of this contact.
I don't believe it does. She's scheduled to do it, but, and again, she's asking me, "Are you sure you want to do it with them banning everything?" And I said, "Well, if I'm going to continue to grow commercially, I'm going to have to have it done." So she's scheduled to come in in March and do it. The reason she's scheduled, scheduled to come in in March to do it is because I didn't have the money to pay her until then.
Got you.
So that's why she's scheduled to do it then.
The file's got a copy of another notice to you from the Water Board dated September twelfth of last year. Did you get a copy of that letter?
The only copy I got from him was dated twenty-ninth of December, and that was the termination of my notice of intent. And to call this, to go onto this website and ask for a refund of my deposit at the Water Board.
So you, you did, so far as you can recollect in your file disclosures, you, you did not get a copy of this letter in September?
No, no. I had talked to Mr. Parker, and I told him that I had people on site, and so when I received this letter, I called him again after the twenty-ninth of December. I called him, and he said, "Well, because it's all past the date that everything had to be done," he says, "Now you're going to have to go onto the website," and the only way I could go on a website is on this telephone. So I got to go to the library and do everything because I don't have a computer. So I have to go on there and file under the state's new guidelines. So.
Do you, do you, do you keep a particular file on, on this Water Board business, like a manila folder or something?
It's all, yeah, I do. And this, this one right here is the only one I have. This one, the letter that they've sent me on the twenty-ninth.
And that basically says you can file for a refund of the fee you already paid?
Correct.
And then submit a, a new application?
Right. Under the state's new guidelines.
Do you remember when it was, as best you can recall, when you had that conversation with Mr. Parker where he said you had to have a more recent biological and cultural survey? The file puts it between May and September, but that may not be your recollection.
I hate to say a date and then it not be correct.
Well, just an approximate timeframe. I don't expect you to remember an exact date.
I think, when he told me that, he told me that I had to have a, a recent one, it was, I think it was back in June or something, because I had been talking to him. I said, "Well, why can't I use the one that we had already done for the logging?" I couldn't understand, I couldn't wrap my mind around this, why it had to be done again, and so then it was explained to me by CDF that you have to change if you change crops, which still doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but I understand that it's, it has to be done, so I got on board with Melinda to do it, but I didn't have the five thousand dollars to pay them to do it until March, and so that's when I scheduled that.
Was, was there a discussion between you and Mr. Parker that, that the NOI was incomplete in their view because tiers, the incorrect tier was selected?
Okay. Mr. Parker confused me from the beginning. At first, he told me, he says, "Yes, Mr. Mallett," he says, "I see your, I see your farm, and I see what you're doing, and it looks like you're going to be Tier One because you haven't done no grading. We did no grading. We didn't dig any holes. We planted everything on top of the ground and all organic, because we didn't want to do no pesticides or nothing." And so then, I think it was in June, he called and said, "Hey, I see that, that you are, you have expanded your grow," and I said, "Yeah, because the county said, 'Well, you didn't bring this paper in by this date saying that you're only going to grow ten thousand five hundred, so now you have to pay the whole amount.'" So there's something else that I didn't know. So he says, "Yes, you're good to go. You're still going to be Tier One, because prior to the fire, we'd, you know, after the fire, we'd knocked all the trees down, so they wouldn't be in the way." And he says, "Yes, I see everything that you've done there," and so he's looking at me from a satellite picture, and he said, "You're going to be Tier One." And then I get, this letter says that, "No, you're going to be Tier Two, and because of an incorrect tier size that I selected," which he's the one that told me that was Tier One to begin with.
Which letter are you referring to?
The letter on the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth of what?
Sep- uh, December. Yeah. This one.
Can we see it?
Got you.
Please? Thank you. While he's reading that, I just have a quick question. It says that you went in on June fifteenth to submit your application. Is that when you went in? You didn't wait till the June thirtieth and stand in line with everybody else? You went in ahead of time?
No, we went in ahead of time, yeah. We went in and paid the fee.
And-
Charlotte was right there with me. You remember? She gave you the check.
I have doubt he remembers.
No, Peter remembers.
Hundreds of people in a year ago. Okay, so when you went in and you met them over the counter, did you have an appointment, or it was just a walk-in? Do you remember that?
No, it was crazy. It was like, "Go here, get this signed." So I came in, I had pretty much everything that I thought that I needed, and they said, "No, you have to get, you have to get the Water Board thing done, you got to get the business license done, you got to do the live scan for the sheriff."
And nobody-
So there was a bunch of things that I still had to do.
And what about the lease? What about the lease? That's my question.
I don't remember anything about a lease.
Okay.
Because if they would've said something when my mother was standing right there, we would've took care of it right then.
You did get this letter, okay, in the mail?
Yes. I also got the one, uh, about the appeal today.
About the what?
About the appeal hearing today. So, I've got this, you know, these letters, so... But we have had mail stolen out there.
I, I understand that. I'm not, we're not denying that. I, I think, I think the issue that is, and I think you were, still had questions. I don't want to interfere with your comments. I'm sorry.
Well, um, this letter that you did get on the twenty, dated the twenty-ninth of last year-
Well, that's the date he put on the letter. But I, I don't remember the actual date that I got the letter.
Right, but that, that doesn't matter. It does refer to the two earlier letters that they say they sent you?
Right.
Did you look around in your house, your files and so forth, to see if you could find those letters?
I've been living in Trimmer for two and a half years.
Well, then it shouldn't be too hard to find, huh?
Yeah, and I couldn't find anything.
Couldn't find anything? Didn't, were you surprised to see that reference to those letters?
I was.
Did you call up-
Because I thought that I was good to go. I thought I was the tier one. I thought it was just a thousand dollar, oops, I thought it was just a thousand dollars, and bam, and I was good to go.
Did you, did you call up Mr. Parker and say, "What's the deal with these letters? I never got them?"
Yes, I did. And he says, "Well, because you didn't have the cultural and biological site test done by this date. And now the state has basically took over everything they were doing." He says, "You're going to have to go on the website and reapply. So, go to this website on there and ask for a refund of the deposit that I already paid." So, I'm like, "Now what?" I, I think it's like, everybody just doesn't know quite what's legal, what to do, what not to do. And I'm just trying to work at home.
Gee, I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Oh, I-
I think-
Is your mother-in-law, she's owner of the property, is she on anything else? Is she on a copy of your business license? Is she on anything else, or is it just you?
Uh, no, it's me. We did it that way because I didn't want her to get in trouble in case the feds came and said, "Hey, you can't do that. You know, it's still against the federal law." So, we just put it in my name.
Okay, thank you.
And this letter, when you received the letter in December twenty-seventeen, um, until that point, did you think that you had a complete, uh, application before the water board? Or with the conversations that you had with Mr. Parker?
The only thing that I thought that I still had to do was have the cultural and biological-
Okay.
Done in March. That, I thought I was good for that. And then I get this.
Yeah.
And he says, "No, you had to have it done by this day." So, I said, "All right." So, now what I do, he says, "Well, go to this website, ask for a refund, and apply under the state's new guidelines." So, that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have any further information that you want to add? Or I'd like to go to public comment and see if there's anybody in the public that would like to comment? And if they say anything, you get a chance to rebuttal.
Okay.
Okay. All right, then what I'd like to do is see if we can take anybody from the public that has any comments on this particular appeal? Okay? Can you, uh, Annette? Thank you.
Virginia Franklin. I think it's really interesting that there's such a double standard, um, how this sheriff's report is, um, handled. For example, in my case, Mr. Mauer was in receipt of a sheriff's report that stated the, the guys that were on my place had been arrested for very recent violent felonies, including violence against women. But it was completely ignored, and I never even knew until a year and a half later that he received that, um-
So, how does that, how are you relating that to his appeal?
Because when somebody has a thirty-year-old, uh, uh, issue with the sheriff's department and the planning department holds that as a reason to not give a, um, a permit to grow, that's so completely different. In my circumstance, there was a recent violent felonies, the guy was arrested for it, and yet, nothing was done about it.
Are you speaking in favor of his appeal or against it?
I'm speaking in questioning why there's such a wide discrepancy in how the sheriff's reports are handled with this guy-
Okay.
And my situation.
Okay, so I need you to stay public comment on his appeal directly? Not your case, but his case? Is there anything you would like to add to his case as far as?
Just that there's a, a, a wide discrepancy in how these decisions are being made.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. And do you have any rebuttal, Madeline?
I do not.
Okay, Peter?
I have, I have a question for Blenny Berman. You indicate, whoops, just a second, let me get the, act of the right paperwork here. Well, I'm going to do this by memory. I'll find, oh, here we are. In, in the proposed resolution, you say the registrant received two notices of incomplete notice of intent from the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board for failure to apply for the correct tier size. That, I take that as, that as a conclusionary, uh, statement from the, from, drawn from the evidence that he was sent two notices, that, that you're concluding that he received those notices?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, Peter, did you have anything further you wanted to say? Or shall I go back to the appellate for rebuttal?
I don't have anything unless you have any questions, open.
Do you have anything you want to rebuttal? Are you good to go?
Good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the pub-
I, I think a copy of that December letter ought to be in the record.
Sure, we, we received a copy of it.
I never received a copy of that letter.
I, I noticed that the, the copy was sent to our department. So, we, we-
You have a copy?
We, we should have a copy of it.
Okay.
Because we, we did not. We did not have a copy of what was sent to us.
We'll make sure it's part of the public record.
Did we give that back to him already?
I did, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, then, um, and you're sure you have a copy? We don't need to make a copy of his?
Well, I saw that the department was, was C C.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. All right, so then what I'm going to do is close the public hearing, bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation. All right, do you want to start here, there, here? Where do you want to start at?
Well, I'll start with one concern I have is that we have a memo from the sheriff that the applicant is saying is not accurate. So, we have a conflict in the evidence there. We don't have the sheriff here to discuss it. And I, I'm, I don't see, I guess this is going to end up again with a question of legal counsel. The, what are, what are we to do when there's a conflict in the evidence between what the sheriff has given us and what the, what the applicant has said? I understand that the sheriff has certain, uh, discretion under the statute. But if the, the sheriff comes to us with, "These are the facts." And we understand from the applicant that he doesn't agree that those are the facts. Are we bound to what the sheriff has said the facts are? Or are we bound as to his conclusion, even if we're not clear on what the facts are?
No, you, you weigh the evidence for abusive discretion.
Right.
And, and, and just to clarify some, I think, confusion, and under the urgency ordinance, um, it's not the, well, the urgency ordinance states that the sheriff, not the planning director, makes the decision. I know there's been some discussion among the planning commission in the past about how there's still an inference that, you know, imply, an implication that the, um, planning director needs to exercise his own discretion. So, to the extent that Mr. Mauer is here, and that is your interpretation of the urgency ordinance, you could always ask him questions.
I, I'm clear for now.
Okay, I, I'm just going to say that the, the only discrepancy is that he also, on his application, disclosed charges. He didn't, he disclosed one portion of it. He, um, he admits in his appeal letter that, "Hey, this happened." So, I don't know how much of a discretion that you're actually seeing, other than the hundred and eighty days. The appellate has been honest in discussing all of that and, and did waive his rights in discussing that. So, he wasn't particularly denying a whole lot of it. He's saying, "I didn't have a hundred and eighty days. I'm going to take his word for it." He knows if he spent fifteen weekends out at-
Mickey Grove.
Right, so he knows. Um, I don't have an issue with that.
But I, I, I-
I really-
To me, the, the, the first sentence under the, the citation to the urgency ordinance was brand-new. It says, "Arrested on multiple occasions from eighty-one to ninety-two for violent criminal activities, one of which involved a firearm." I, I, until this morning, I didn't see anything about that. And, uh, we have a denial on that. So, if we're just going to look at that one misdemeanor conviction, and, uh, and I, I tend to agree with you, as far as applicant knows where he spent how many days, um-
Fifteen weekends.
We just, uh, I, my tendency would be to disregard that first, first sentence because that is something that wasn't before us today, and we don't have a sheriff here.
We could disregard the whole letter, correct?
We could disregard the whole letter.
We have his testimony, or his, that what happened. And he has it in writing in the letter that he wrote to us.
Right.
And so, we don't include the letter from the sheriff.
Well, we, it's, it's in the record, but we don't need to accept it as gospel. Okay?
I'm sorry, but I have a whole lot more confidence in my sheriff that he would not submit me a letter of testimony that's full of lies. I'm not going to disagree there. I am going to take his word for the fact that something wasn't recorded correctly, and he knows what time he served. But I don't think the sheriff would have submitted a letter to me making things up.
I didn't do a hundred and eighty days for any firearm charge, ever.
I understand exactly what you're saying. And I gave you credit for that and said, "I believe you." I, you, you looked honest when you were testifying. I have nothing to discredit you on. You admitted it in your application. You put it in your appeal letter. I, I don't have any problem with that. The problem that we're going to have, and you have to bear with us here. We, we've got several issues on the application. And people have been denied for lesser issues than what you have here.
Correct.
The Water Quality Control Board, we've had other people say they didn't get their mail. I don't doubt that you didn't get it. We've had, but, but the notice is still out there. So, we still have to take that into consideration. We've got the issue of the lease. The one thing that I'm going to say to you and for you is that, thank you for coming in early instead of waiting until June thirtieth. I give you a lot of credit for that. Unfortunately, I wish at that time the lease had been corrected.
Might as well.
Yeah, I'm sure. But, um, but for me, the lease still being absent, um, the, um, the Water Quality Control Board issue, the sheriff's recommendation and the planning commissioner or director upholding, um, those are all real facts that I don't know that we can overrule on because we've got an urgency ordinance before us that we have to follow and vote on and rule on. I guess the one thing that you put in your letter that I haven't heard a lot of conversation on was the G I S survey. This Patrick group. He should've been getting your letters as well. Was he contacted? And, and did you hire him after the last letter that-
It's her.
Her, excuse me. Thank you.
I actually hired her to do this after I talked to Mr. Parker. And, uh, I believe it was, it's, it was after I talked to you, about a month or so.
So, it's real recent that that took place?
It's been a while back that I brought her on board. The only reason that she hasn't come out here and done it is because I didn't have the money to pay her.
Okay, so that the letter, the, the, the two letters that you didn't get either, the first two letters?
No.
Then, and you knew to hire her back when? What? How? Oh, because of Madeline's letter?
I asked the, them who, what I had to finish-
Okay.
To get my application going. And she said, "You need to talk to these people. They can do the cultural and biological site assessment."
Okay.
Not sure of the date, but it was shortly after I talked to her.
Okay. Are there any other?
Well, one thing that I point out is that I believe, if I understood you correctly, you just said that he, he did put his misdemeanor in on his application, and his, his appeal letter indicated that as this was not a felony, I did not include it on my application to-
I know.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, is there any, because we're in deliberation, probably shouldn't, I had questions for you though, and I blew that. But, um, does anybody have any other questions? Any more deliberating that you want to do? Are you ready to have a reading? Where are we at? You want to go over the resolution?
I have a few comments.
Okay.
I'm not convinced there is a discrepancy, except for the hundred and eighty-day issue between the sheriff's report and Mr. Malot's testimony. It does say he was arrested for violent criminal activities, one of which involved a firearm, dismissed. And so, it may well be that the, what the sheriff got shows an arrest, but there actually turned out to be no firearm involved. So, the two are not inconsistent necessarily. But we still do have the misdemeanor conviction to deal with. On the water board situation, the, um, I, I credit his testimony, as does the chairperson, that he didn't get those letters. And it makes a certain amount of sense because one would think if he had, he would've done something about it. However, the discussion with Mr. Parker was apparently back in June where he was told he needed the cultural and biological surveys. And that hasn't happened. For lack of money or whatever, it, it hasn't happened. And so, we still don't have a complete application. And with respect to the lease issue, I mean, I can understand how one would think that, "Why do I need a lease? My mother-in-law's in, in on this project." But the urgency ordinance is pretty clear, and it's in two places. That you either have to provide a deed or a lease showing you have possession of the property. It's, it's just there, and we're stuck with it.
Okay, timeout. You can't interrupt because we're in deliberations. I'm sorry. You can have a seat. We have a question, we'll call you up. Thank you.
So, I mean, I do have a number of changes to the resolution when we get there, but those are my comments on the, on the case.
Do you have any? You're good? Okay, how about you?
Well, I, just a basic summary where we've required people to comply with the terms of the ordinance. There have been certain times when we've, uh, looked at special circumstances of the case and found, uh, that, that there had been substantial compliance. But here, we have several aspects where the, the ordinance was not complied with. And I, I don't think it's fair to everybody else that we've been denying to, uh, to start making exceptions just on the basis of, "Well, that, the ordinance doesn't make common sense under the circumstances of the case." That's not a, a, an exception we have found that we've read into the ordinance until now. So, I'm, I don't see how we can do anything but deny the appeal.
Okay. Commissioner Wooster, do you have changes you want to make to the resolution? Is that what I understood you to say?
Yes.
Okay.
Several, actually.
Are you ready?
Uh, okay. Some are, I'll just take them in order. Some are typos. Page one, paragraph one of the Be It Therefore Resolved. Last line says satisfactory to the planning directory. Should be planning director. And at the bottom of the page, second line from the bottom, says, "And provide a copy of a document indication, receipt," second line from the bottom, says, "And provide a copy of a document indication receipt by the water quality board," should be indicating. Then the next sentence, it says, "The registrant received two notices of incomplete notice of intent, et cetera." I would strike that sentence. For two reasons. One, the evidence suggests to me strongly he didn't receive them, and number two, even if he had, it would belong to the evidence section, not the finding. I think there should be a finding, which I think is backed up by the evidence, that would read, and this would take the place of the last sentence that's there. "The registrant did not submit all necessary forms and documents to the water quality control board to constitute a complete application for its purposes by September 7, 2016." And then under the evidence, I think we can accept the evidence that the water board sent the letter. That seems to be true, as opposed to him receiving it. And I do think that the testimony makes it clear, and I think there should be a reference in the evidence to this, the fact that the applicant was notified in or about June of 2017 by Mr. Parker of the water board, that he did need to submit a recent cultural and biological survey. We can go back over this if we need, if these are okay with everybody. Then under paragraph two, where it says, "The registration may be denied or invalidated if," and then it goes on, the last sentence reads, "This applicant failed his black ground check." I think we need to have the conclusion there that says justifying denial of his application. Okay, then down in paragraph three, no, let me back up, because I'm misreading my own writing. I think we also have to add, under the evidence, under that section, that the planning director agreed with the disqualification, because it's his decision. And I would also add to that, that the applicant admitted, that he pleaded no contest to a misdemeanor conviction and served time. Which is taken from his appeal letter. That's part of the evidence that I think supports the finding. Then down on paragraph three, 3B, the sentence that reads, "The applicant is not the landowner. The finding should be, the applicant did not provide a deed proving his ownership or a lease." And then on the evidence, it should be, "A deed was included with the registration paperwork, but it does not show the applicant was the owner. The applicant did not submit a lease and stated there is none." And that concludes my suggestions. And I would strike the sentence under paragraph fee for evidence, "A lease agreement was not submitted by Mr. Malott," because I took care of it otherwise.
I didn't understand the last.
The last sentence, the sentence that's there under evidence, "A lease agreement was not submitted by Mr. Malott," I would strike that, because my other changes take care of it. And I don't know how you want to do this, but I can get with the planning director or somebody, and we can go through these changes if they're acceptable and make sure we get them.
That's a lot of changes. I think for, I mean, I tried to make notes as quickly as possible, but how do you feel?
Well, they've been clearly read into the record. We can either go back through the tape, or I can get Mr. Wooster's notes, and we can refi, you know, we'll have the final, but if you're.
I'm in agreement with his changes.
Yeah, if you all agree, and you understand the changes that were made, we don't need to bring it back.
Okay.
I have one Wooster-like suggestion to, when you were talking about the, be it therefore resolved under paragraph one, and your change, you said by September 7, and I would suggest that be on or before September 7.
Oh, that works.
That's fine. I'll write it down, or I'll forget it.
Yeah.
Okay, that concludes my suggestions.
Can you read all that back? Excellent. Madeline, could you read the recommendation, please?
Yes. Commissioner Wooster, would you mind just telling me your very first comment one more time?
My very first comment was a typo. Under paragraph one of the resolution, the last line under one where it says satisfactory to the planning directory, you don't need a Y at the end?
In the resolution, just below the whereas, be it therefore resolved, under number one, the last sentence, look at the word director, it's directory. Got it? Okay. Okay.
So our recommendation is that the planning commission adopt resolution 2018-003, denying appeal 2016-165, thereby upholding the planning director's denial of cannabis cultivation registration 2016-165, and I apologize, that's amended resolution.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second, somewhere?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
This action is final, and let's appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 calendar days.
Okay, do you guys need a break? Okay, we're gonna take a 10-minute break. Okay, we will come back to order, and we will move down to, except for my phone thinks I said something that it wants to answer to, item number four, 2016-670, and Ben, it looks like you're up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ben Diamond, Planning Department. This is Appeal 2016-670 by Stephen Henderson, appealing the denial of commercial medical cannabis cultivation registration application, 2016-670 by the planning director. This site is located at 17840 Highway 26 in Glencoe on a 3.59 acre parcel. This application was denied for two reasons. The application was found to contain false or misleading information, and because it was the submitted photographic evidence that was found to be false or misleading, the application was also without adequate evidence of cultivation prior to May 10, 2016. With the application, four photos were submitted as evidence that commercial cultivation was occurring on the property prior to May 10. These photos were all date-stamped September 24, 2015, with timestamps ranging from 1:00 a.m. to 2:41 a.m. It's obvious from the photos that it was not the wee hours of the morning when these photos were taken. It was daytime, so there's inaccuracy in the date stamps on the photos. And comparing the submitted photos to aerial imagery of the subject parcel, as well as photos that were taken during the compliance inspection that was conducted on July 12, 2017, it's obvious that the photographic evidence submitted was not of the cultivation site, but somewhere else in a lower-lying part of the county, as you can tell from the sparsely wooded area and open field surrounding the cultivation area shown in the photographic evidence, whereas Glencoe is a pretty densely wooded pine forest. In the appeal letter, the appellant claims that the photos that were submitted were submitted on this accident by a consultant hired by the appellant to prepare their application. That doesn't really make a difference. The responsibility of what's submitted is that of the applicant, so whoever prepared it for them, doesn't matter. It was their responsibility to review the materials that were submitted for their application. They also go on to state that this hearing was requested in order to present the correct photographic evidence. However, if the incorrect photographic evidence was submitted, that means an incomplete application was submitted, which would be in violation of 1795-165-N1, which requires that a complete application be submitted no later than June 30, 2016. This is identical to at least two other appeals that have come before this commission, where the photographic evidence submitted was found to be false or misleading, and therefore the application was without adequate evidence. The appellant then claims to have the correct evidence, but the commission ruled that that would constitute an incomplete application, and the submitted photos, correct or not, couldn't be considered, because they would have been required to have been submitted by June 30, 2016, which is impossible, as that date has passed. And the appellant did submit some documentation and photos this Tuesday, which I emailed to all of you, but if you didn't get it, there are copies available as well. That's all I have.
Okay, is the appellant here today?
Good morning. How are you guys doing?
Good morning. And your name, please?
Stephen Henderson.
Thank you.
And I do have the photographs that are in question. I don't know how you guys received those photographs, but I have all the photographs, and they do have dates on them, dating back to March and February. So these were the photos that were supposed to get submitted. I don't know how those photos got submitted that you guys received, but I have the photos that have to be submitted.
Were you there when the application?
It was a mistake. Huh?
Were you there when the application was turned in?
Yes.
Did you turn in the application yourself?
Yes, but I really didn't look at the photos. I assumed that they were the correct photos, but I guess they weren't, and I have the correct ones with me. I don't know if you guys want to see them, you guys want to look at them, but.
Who put the package together?
I did.
And where are these photos? What do these photos come from that we are looking at?
They came from a photographer that I hired to take them. So I have them all right here. They all have dates on them, and they all show that we started.
Do you have a letter from that photographer?
No, I do not. But they all have dates, and they all show.
You're talking right now about the photos that you provided to us recently.
Those photos that you said that were incorrect?
No, no, I'm talking, when, today, when we're talking about these photos or those photos, gonna have to make it clear which set of photos you're talking about. I thought just before this.
Yeah, the ones that you received, those should be the same photos that I have here.
Yeah.
But I just bought more, just in case.
It's just, and you having the slightest idea of where the photos came from that were submitted with the application.
The photographer messed up. I don't know how they got the incorrect photos, but.
Okay, so I just want to go back to where I was. The photos that we had submitted were dated of September 15, September something, 2015, September 24, 2015. The photos that you have in your hand are dated what, and where did they come from?
I have some dating March 8, 2016. I have some dating.
Who took those?
The photographer.
How would the photographer have known to go take photos when the ordinance wasn't even passed then? We didn't even know what we were doing.
We just have them take photos just so we can know, just in case anything, you know, so.
So he was taking photos for several different cultivation sites?
No, these are, these are just one cultivation site. But I believe the guy we work with, they have, they deal with other cultivation sites too, so maybe they got mixed up, I'm not too sure, but.
So how are those times dated and stamped?
If you guys want to take a look at them, we can.
I think we have.
Do we have those?
I think you guys should have them.
Okay, so the ones that he, okay, I have, no, those are the ones that were submitted with the application. He's saying he has different photos. That's what the one you're talking about. I've got that. Thank you. I'm just confused, because it's hard. These are dated February.
And there's some that are dated.
And there's some March, okay. You have a, is this photographer a friend, or is this someone you hired to come do this?
Oh, it's a friend, yeah.
Okay, does anybody have any further questions?
Yeah, I have. I'm looking at a photo dated March 22, at 1:47 p.m. It shows a fence.
Hold on.
Shows a fence, and then some green plants, looks like growing up through the pine needles. Do you have that?
That one. Is it this one, maybe?
Yeah, that one.
Yeah.
Okay, what are those little green plants?
That's just the grass. That's not, I believe, that doesn't look like any plants, because we grew all, we had all our plants in pots like this.
Okay.
So that's just, that's just the surrounding area, like this here. See how it's green? It's just, it's just the grass.
So you're submitting photos of your fencing? Is that what that is?
Yeah, because they're trying to say that it was incorrect photos or something, so they just want you to see that it's not incorrect, that there are trees around, and they took the picture of the grass just to make sure, trying to get every angle, you know, so you guys can see that we're not trying to hide anything or take photos of different areas. The photos that the receiver, in the original, I don't know where they came from, it's just a bad mistake, I don't know. We have everything, we submitted everything, we've paid our taxes, we did the water board, I mean, the application was, we submitted everything, so just the photos, I don't know.
Looking at another one dated March 22, 2016, at 1:47 p.m. It shows a number of pots with something growing in them, and a fence in the background.
Which one is that?
March 22, 1:47 p.m. Little pots in the foreground, and some bigger pots, with a fence in the background. You find it?
Is it this one?
Yeah. Okay, what's growing in those pots?
That is what's left over from, they took the plants out, so it's just grown, vegetation grown, from the old soil.
Well, are those little marijuana plants or something else?
It looks like just old vegetation from the, but some of them look like marijuana plants.
So in Valley Springs is where this is located?
This is Glencoe.
Glencoe, yes.
Mr. Henderson, these, these pictures, then you would say show the preparation for growing.
Yes, that's what it is, yes, preparation.
Because these were pots that had, you had grown cannabis in these pots the year before, I assume?
Yes, and it's just preparation.
And this is what's left?
Yes.
Okay, I think we understand your position.
Okay, do you have anything further you want to add, say, inform us of?
No.
No. Okay, and you don't have a letter from the photographer saying these were a mistake, these are the right.
I can get one if you would like, but I don't have one today.
Okay.
I didn't know that I would need a letter.
Okay. Okay. On that note, then if you have nothing further to say, I'd like to see if the public has anything to say. Okay.
My name's John Dill. I live at eighteen thousand Highway twenty-six. That property is the next property down from ours. There's four lots on this... In this area off of Highway twenty-six.
And that...
I don't really... I'm not a public speaker.
Okay.
But my wife took pictures yesterday of what that property looks like. No dates on them. Somebody allowed this gentleman to grow hundreds of dope plants on two point eight eight acres. That's astounding to me. I support that you guys denied this particular subject we're talking about, but what makes me even more concerned is that somebody allowed hundreds of plants to be grown on the... Above the South Fork of the McColony River on two point eight eight acres. What in the heavens' name were people thinking to do that?
It says it...
There's been absolutely no stewardship of the land. These pictures will show fence daled to trees, just runaround trees hanging on bushes. They put up some black tarp. We have to drive by that every day. This property looks like it was hit with Agent Orange and then had a B-52 strike on it. It's ugly. We have to look at this every day. The owner of the property is an absentee landlord. He'll probably get to rent the property. If you guys are giving out permits to grow on two point eight eight acres, this gentleman or somebody else will probably be up there tearing up the land. There's a pile of soil, probably as big as that area right there, just sitting there. I've had to put in five yards of drain rock where the water trucks and the soil trucks came up, totally tore up our driveway. It's on this particular piece of property, but we all have an easement out there. Nobody did anything about... Did anything to repair it. The last windstorm we had about a week ago last Monday, several trees came down across the driveway. We could not get out. Nobody there to move the trees, but me and I had a load of garbage in the truck, and I wanted... This was at three P M. If you guys are interested in looking at what that property looks like right now, I have the pictures. Don't have the dates. If you want to look at my wife's camera, that's fine. But the issue, like I said, I applaud you for denying the permit, but I ask why in the heavens' name did you even give a permit to somebody to grow on two point eight eight acres? You don't have to answer me because I don't really think you know. I don't think anybody went out there and looked at that property when... This is the third gentleman or the third year that people have been growing there. Why is that? Money? Got five grand every time somebody asks for a permit to grow dope there? Well, that's great. Nobody came up and asked us what we thought.
Are those different growers over the three years, or one?
I have no idea.
Okay, all right.
I was told last or the beginning of this grow season that these guys had nothing to do with the other bunch that were in there. Maybe they do, maybe they don't. I don't know. I'm not going to go into those guys because I didn't like them. I have... The guys that are down there now are amiable enough people, but they had one... Focus on one thing: making money. Or maybe helping the poor cancer patients. I don't know. I really don't see much of a difference, but...
Not that it matters, but for the record, I just want you to know that that's three point five nine acres, not two point eight.
Well, I went over to the planning commission to ask about this, and when they pulled up that piece of property, it says two point eight eight acres.
Okay, well...
My property is five and a quarter acres. The property next to me is two and a half acres, and what they told me at the planning commission, and I looked at the computer, it said two point eight eight acres. But if we're going to squabble over a half acre...
No, we're not, we're not.
You know, I mean, the thing is, is why? That... I mean, I know that has nothing to do with the appeal.
Right.
But this is my only opportunity to let you folks know.
So would you like to give your picture?
Oh, absolutely. I would absolutely like to.
So if you do that, I just need you to know those go on the record, and we need to keep those copies?
No problem.
Okay.
Actually, no, maybe the copy is the letters that my wife wrote. If we could perhaps make a copy of that, or we could bring it back.
We can bring copies. We can get a copy for you.
But what I understand, this... These folks have put a lot of time and money and effort into what they did.
Go back to the mic, please. Thank you.
They put a lot of time and effort and money, and I hate to see them lose all of that. That's not why I'm here. But if you folks or whoever, I don't know if you guys had anything to do with it or not, but if someone with... Anyway, if you just would have put a limit on, say, five acres, three and a half acres...
Okay, so my question... I have a question, because time was kind of up, but I asked you a couple of questions, so I just want to ask you one more.
Mm-hmm.
Are you speaking for or against this project?
I just... I stated at least twice that I applaud your denial.
Okay.
For the reason of it looks like a bomb went off there.
Okay.
Okay? And I will say one more sentence. I put all of the hassle this poor guy's going through, the money he's going to lose probably, the stuff we've had to look at on our property at the feet of whoever approved a permit to grow on such a small piece of property just above the South Fork of the McColony River. It shows absolutely no foresight, no thought. It's like you guys... Or, excuse me, not you guys, whoever rubber-stamped these things. And I don't believe I'm alone in that opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and...
I do think the appellant should have a chance to...
Yeah.
Share in these photographs.
You want to look at these photos? Well, at least there's evidence of growing marijuana. Okay, we're going to pass them around, let you take a look at them. When was code compliance on the property? What's the date of this form? Am I looking at the right one? What? No date.
No date.
Seriously? They signed off completely. I was just going to see if it... How good it looked of them compared to them. Mr. Henderson, do you recall when code compliance came out and did their inspection on your property? Do you know what month that was?
I don't recall. I know they did inspect them. We had inspections and everything.
Okay. Did you ever get any notices at all, or it was a clean inspection?
I believe it was a clean inspection, no notices. They didn't say anything, so...
Okay.
They didn't have an issue, I don't understand, you know, so...
Okay. Does anybody have any further questions? I'm going to go ahead and close public comment if there's no other further public comment because I didn't close it.
Yeah, I have one question.
Okay. So I'm going to go to rebuttal, and then we'll get to him. Do you have anything to rebuttal, Ben?
Just a little clarification. There was the inspection on July twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, and he did pass.
And you had that date that I was looking for. Thank you. Okay, now it's your turn to rebuttal, and they can ask you questions.
My file has two letters of appeal apparently signed by you. One received November twenty-eighth, and one received December sixth of last year. And one says it's a notice of appeal by Upstairs Inc. on the subject property. The other says it's a notice of appeal for Country Club Wellness Inc. on the same property. How come there's two notices?
That was a mistake made by the planning department. They put one name, and we wanted to use the Upstairs, so we changed it. And I don't know if you remember, but we... I remember talking to you about it, but we changed it over to only be Upstairs. I don't know, they made a mistake with it. So the one that they're supposed to use is Upstairs. Upstairs Wellness. The Country Club one, they're not supposed to use that one. I don't know why they have it in there, because we... I spoke with him, and they said to only use the Upstairs Wellness.
Well, probably because they both referred to the same application, two thousand and sixteen dash six seven oh.
Yeah, that was kind of confusing to me, too, and I talked to them, and they said that they wanted that... And we told them just, we're only going to use the Upstairs Wellness.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wussel, there's been numerous instances where the corporations have changed. As long as the individuals involved in those corporations remain pretty much the same, we have allowed changes. So it sounds like this is probably... Original application was under the... Or the Country Club or something.
Country Club, yeah, it was changed.
And then they modified it, and probably we went back and looked at the original application to see, oh, there was the corporation name, and missed the fact that there had been a name change later on.
That's exactly what happened, yes.
Okay. No further questions? Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to close the hearing, bring it back to commissioners for deliberations.
Okay, I'll start. It's clear that the incorrect photos were submitted. It's not clear how that happened when the applicant put the packet together and actually submitted it himself, didn't check it. I think it's also true that the application was supposed to be complete as of June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, and it wasn't because it didn't have the photos. And I don't think this is necessary to the decision, but even if you looked at the correct photos that were submitted a couple days ago, they do not show, in my judgment, evidence of cultivation commensurate with the area supposed to be cultivated. They don't have marijuana plants.
We have voted against other people for the same reason, for not having the correct evidence. He stated he knows the photos are wrong. He stated he's the one who turned in the application. I think that we have to uphold the planning director's decision.
And since the terms of the ordinance is false or misleading, if it was just misleading, then we might have some question as to intent or something, but these clearly were false photographs. They did not show what they said they showed. And I agree. It's a shame when if every other requirement has been satisfied, this is a very clear requirement. We've, as Commissioner Sisk has said in the past, in the similar circumstances, we deny the appeal, and I think it's only fair to everybody to treat this just the same.
I'm in agreement. So would I... I think we are probably ready to go over the resolution.
I don't have any suggestions on the resolution.
I would suggest that under paragraph two, the evidence there, we include in the evidence paragraph a statement similar to what we have in the evidence statement under paragraph one. In addition, applicant admits that the submitted photos are from a different property. Other than that, I have no suggestive changes.
Commissioner Sisk, do you have any changes?
No, ma'am.
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, then can we have you read the recommendation, please?
Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution two thousand and eighteen zero zero two, thus... As amended, thus denying appeal two thousand and sixteen six seventy, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny application point sixteen six seventy.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
One second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero. Peter, you want to...
And again, this action is final unless appealed to the board of supervisors within fifteen calendar days.
Okay, we will move on to item number five, two zero one six eight eight zero.
I will be presenting this since Paul is no longer working with the county. This is an appeal of the denial of commercial cannabis registration, two thousand and sixteen eight eighty, by Casey Salmon. It's located on a twenty point four four acre site, seventy-six oh five Philly Lane in Angels Camp. The application was for a ten thousand square foot mixed light cultivation. On January thirty-first of last year, the code compliance officers conducted inspection of the site, found a number of violations, and provided the registrant with a notice to correct. A subsequent inspection was done on November second, and violations were also found, three of which had been observed on the initial inspection that had not been corrected. Based upon the failure to correct those violations, the registration was denied on November seventeenth of last year. The specific issues that... Reasons for denial were the inadequate fencing, lack of adequate posting, there was no reflective material on the notice. I'm sorry. Look at my notes here. So at the original inspection, the applicant was provided a notice at that time of the things that needed to be done. This was on January thirty-first of last year. The fencing was made of baling wire. In some areas, there was no fencing at all. And again, the posting information. He would give them ten days to correct. There was some information was provided, but not complete information indicating the correction. So again, on November twenty-second, the inspection was made again. Posting was not even present at that time, and the fence... Fencing was still not complete. There... You know, the photos had been submitted as compliance, was basically rolls of wire in the back of a truck, and this was not installed. It was still just laying on the ground in November. So for those reasons, the application was denied. There was no rationale provided in the appeal letter to explain why they didn't follow up and complete the application, so there will be nothing more to you on this item.
It appears that code enforcement is not present to testify. I could go get them if you guys would like.
Okay, that would be fine, but in the meantime, I'm going to go ahead and let the appellant come up and start testifying. Would that be okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi.
Casey Salmon, for the record.
Okay, thank you.
So I would like to request more time to find adequate legal representation on my ongoing appeal for a commercial cannabis license, but if I cannot do that, I'm ready to address everything right now.
Okay. Peter, were you aware of a continuation request coming?
I was unaware that... Had you requested that previously in writing, or just now requesting this?
I called planning department, and I wanted to... Just, I called Planning Department and I wanted more adequate time to find legal representation and they told me, put it in writing and come here and give it to you.
Okay, so we're just receiving that request now?
So it is here, but I am willing to address everything right now if I have to.
Okay. All right, then I am going to switch over to the commissioners and address them and see if they would like to continue with the continuance because you would like better legal representation at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Are any of the commissioners opposed to giving a continuance?
Yes.
Yes. I want to see what you got as well.
I mean, the denial went out November 15th.
And we have clear rules about when requests for continuances need to be submitted. And day of the hearing is not?
I was told that by the Planning Department, that I needed to do it this way. If there is another way, the Planning Department didn't tell me.
When were you told that?
Probably about five days or so on the phone.
Okay, so because we have precedents that was set forward for us with the supervisors, where a continuance was not granted and it came back, I think we should probably just grant the continuance, in my opinion. I mean, we can have him appeal it forward to the Board of Supervisors, but it could end up back here again.
In light of those circumstances, I, I agree.
Do you recall?
All right, this situation is somewhat distinguishable. In, in that instance, count, the, the individual, Snowden had retained counsel and he was unavailable for that day. And I believe he had also made a written request in advance of the hearing for the continuance. He made the request on the day of the continuance in addition to the earlier submitted written request because notice had already gone out that the hearing was going to occur. So I think this is, is distinguishable. If you made separate findings indicating why it was that, I'm sorry, I just walked in, so I don't know if he's already retained counsel.
No, he was, he came in today requesting the ability for a continuance to seek legal counsel.
Go ahead and name Godwood.
No, no.
On the basis that he had approached the Planning Department five days ago and somebody said that he could come in with a request today.
Well, I'll leave it to your discretion. I just thought I'd point out that there is a distinction between this case and the case in which the court sent the hearing back to the board.
Thank you.
One question would be whether there are members of the public here today on this matter.
Okay, can I have you sit down for just one second and we're going to go to public comment and see if anybody has any public comment on the continuance here today or they're here specifically for this hearing? No? Okay.
So just looking at the current procedures that you've adopted, continuances. An applicant's request for a continuance shall be filed with the clerk of the Planning Commission pursuant to section two above. Section two above says that written comment letters, et cetera, shall be submitted no later than five o'clock on the Monday before the hearing. So I don't know if my staff provided some misinformation to the appellant as far as if, if it'd been, if it was before Monday, then we should have been able to accept that request for continuance. At this point, I don't have a problem with continuing it. I would request that we continue it to a date certain and maybe ask the appellant how much time he would need to retain counsel.
Can you come up and answer those questions, please?
Say approximately 10 days. I've been calling lawyers for the last five days.
Okay, and when did you, what day did you go to the Planning Department?
I didn't go, I called.
And do you know who you spoke with?
It was a female, don't know her name.
Okay. What day did you call?
Approximately five days ago.
This week?
Probably like last week.
Because five days ago was on a weekend, so that's why I'm asking.
It's probably Friday or Saturday.
Wouldn't have been Saturday.
Okay. And you think you could retain counsel within a two-week time period if we rescheduled you from two weeks from today?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, thank you.
Let's check with whether the, what the calendar looks like for two weeks from today.
Well, I think what I'd like to do is poll the commissioners and see if they are willing to continue or they want to have the hearing today.
I would prefer to have it today, but under the circumstances, I'm willing to go with the continuance.
Okay. Commissioner Sisk?
I would prefer to have it today.
I'm agreeing with Commissioner Wooster.
Okay, so I also think we should just continue it based on the fact that maybe a phone call was made and advice wasn't given correctly. Annette, I mean?
Well, two weeks would be the 25th, but packets have to go out tomorrow.
We can't do that. Okay, so what's the next one?
That would be February 8th.
Okay. Is that okay with you?
I would like to do it maybe before that, if, if possible.
It's not possible.
Well, there wouldn't necessarily be a change. And we, the staff report is written. We would just continue it and move the information over to the?
Add it to the agenda.
And, and we don't need to renotice it because we're, it's a continued hearing. So we've already provided notice and anyone who is interested would be here, would hear the date that we can continue it. So I think we could continue it to the 25th.
On the 25th?
It would be. We can have the hearing today. And if you don't succeed, you could always appeal it to the supervisors with legal counsel, so that would be up to you.
I think I can do that.
You want to do that?
I think I have a strong enough case and photo evidence and stuff that, yeah.
You want to have it today and then if you don't succeed, you can pay the $500 appeal fee and go to the supervisors?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
If that's what appellant wants to do, that's fine with me.
If he wants to withdraw his request for continuance, it's fine.
All right, so then I need you to withdraw your request for a continuance so we can have your hearing.
Okay.
All right, say I withdraw my request. Thank you, okay. All right.
I would point out that now we have code compliance and maybe we should hear from code compliance before, so the appellant has a chance to speak.
So that's a great idea, thank you. So we're going to bring code compliance up. So you've heard Peter's presentation. Now I want to hear code compliance. That way, when it's your time period, you can address both of them.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
So sit down?
Sure.
Tom Watts for code compliance. I wasn't here for Peter's presentation, so I don't really know what was said, but I don't think I've got a whole lot to add, really. I did the second inspection and hopefully it's all there in the report, but if you've got any questions, I'll try and answer them.
So as I understand it, you had, there were two violations that are now the, the reasons for this hearing today. And both of those violations were present at the first inspection and at the second inspection. And that was the, the registration document wasn't properly posted. And in the second inspection, there was no registration document found. And then incomplete fencing was the second one.
Yeah, that's correct.
Do I have?
Yep.
Cut the grip? Okay.
Pretty much, yeah.
Do, do you want to add anything as to those two violations?
No, I can't speak for the first inspection, but certainly the, the second time that I was there, there was no fencing, no permit posting, just plants in the pots out in an empty field.
Did you just say there was no fencing?
There was fencing material lying down on the ground, no fence constructed.
Right, I mean, as far as there was no fence adequate to supply the, the requirements of the?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can, can you stay until after the applicant has spoken?
Yes, definitely.
I may have questions for you after he has spoken to us.
Okay.
All right, thank you. We'll let you go ahead and get started on your presentation.
So for which I'm being denied, it's about two violations. I'll address the first one.
That's not for you.
For compliance, 17 dot 95 dot 165 i. I had previously posted the permit in a see-through box with reflective board behind the permit, but due to a tree fall, we found the enclosure was not secure and the paperwork was water damaged. At the time of the site visit, I was in the process of replacing it and as now it is posted and fully functional. And I have pictures of the water damaged box and the new one that we just replaced it with, if you guys would like to see that.
You can hand it to Annette. When you say just replace it, when did it get replaced?
Couple of days ago. Or not, not a couple of days ago, after code compliance came and checked on the, on our property.
Okay, when, when after code compliance was there? How long did it take you?
Approximately a day.
You said it was water damaged?
Yeah.
How was it protected against the water?
Now it's in the bag.
What was it before?
It was just in the box, but the plastic had been broken.
So when they went out there the first time, the box was broken and it got damaged. They went out there a second time and there was still no sign, correct?
Yeah, because it was broken. It was, I had paperwork there the first time, but there was no reflective board behind it. I had my paperwork there.
I think that's reflected in the staff report.
Last year, what, what was your growing season? When did you have plants there?
Say May. I use about what, May 20th is about when we planted.
Okay, May 20th you had plants there and when did you harvest?
Approximately, maybe a week before I started taking down plants. I mean, some come mature faster than others, probably a week before compliance came and checked.
So that would have been in?
So in October, around October 25th.
Okay. So you had, you had live plants there from May 20th to about October 25th, correct?
Approximately.
Okay, during that period of time, did you have the, the permit posted with the reflective material?
Yes.
All throughout that period of time?
Yeah.
And how come it wasn't there in November?
Because as you can see, we, it cracked and we had to rein. I took it into our shop to repair it.
Okay, when did you take it into the shop?
Probably like two days before compliance came.
Before they came, which time?
November 2nd, I think it was.
Okay, now before that, did you have it posted?
Yeah.
So are you telling us that you had the poster, it was posted with the reflective material during the entire time that you had the plants there?
Yes.
Okay. What about the fencing?
Fencing was not up at that time.
Okay, so during the period from May 20th to say October 25th, there were periods of time when the cultivation area wasn't completely fenced, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Do you have more that you want to add to this because we started asking questions and you didn't even get to finish your presentation? So you've got plenty of time to keep asking, talking.
I mean, that's pretty much it for that one, that violation.
Okay, what about the next one?
Yeah, I can address that right now.
Give us all you got. You're your own attorney right now.
Okay, so for violation 17 dot 95 dot 165 j, I had a couple of guys come to build the fence. They had issues with the bedrock, which required renting special equipment to get the fencing material deep enough into the ground effectively.
Okay, I'm in, I'm so sorry. You referenced a j, we're not seeing. We have i and n, no j.
Okay, then it must be, it's the fencing one. I don't, that's what I have.
Okay, so it's the fencing one. We just want to make sure that?
Yeah, fencing, sorry.
Maybe you know more than we do. Okay, thanks.
The fencing violation.
Okay, perfect, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I had a couple of guys come to build the fence. They had issues with the bedrock. We had a pole driver on our site, but it's not motorized. It's just by hand and we're on a ton of rock, which, and then which required special equipment to get the fencing material deep enough into the ground effectively. At the time of inspection, we were waiting to rent one. Yeah, and as of now, our fence is almost complete. We've been up there putting it in and I have pictures of that as well.
So when you say at the time of the inspection, you mean the first inspection and the second inspection? You were planning on renting?
Um, yes. I mean, I tried to get as much things as I can in the ground, but yeah, we're in. But also, in the original email I received about the violation was very vague about the exact completion date. She said, what were her exact words? It was a, there's an email too that we have. She said, I had 10 days to begin corrections.
Seen that in the email?
And you know, I bought fencing material, we went out there, we tried to put as many posts in as we can with our regular post driver. That's very vague to me. I was not given an exact date I had to complete it by, so.
But November seems to be a reasonable time.
It's reasonable, but it was not exact. You know, we have other stuff going on, you know, trying to get, I'm looking at it as a whole project, you know, trying to get stuff done.
Okay, so the letter that you were referencing, just so that you know going forward?
Mm-hmm.
Item number j, the letter that you received says it was withdrawn.
Oh, j was?
That j was withdrawn, so don't.
I must have got that mixed up.
That's okay, just making sure you know that.
Okay.
Okay, so you knew what you were talking about when you referenced it, it's just you didn't see the word withdrawn, that's why it wasn't there. Okay, so when, when somebody sends you a correction notice and they say you have 10 days to complete, you need to get started within that 10 days, they need to see progress?
Was it 10 days to complete? She put 10 days to begin.
To begin showing progress.
Corrections.
So when they come back, they can see you're making steps towards correcting the correction notice. What do you think's a fair timeframe on that? How long do you think that they were going to give you? I mean, just, I'm just curious.
I'm not too sure. I was under the impression that I would be notified, hey, we're going to come check on your farm next week. And I'd be like, okay, I got to get this done. I was never given any phone calls or anything.
And it's still not completed today?
No, but it's almost. I have pictures of the fence right now, if you guys want to see them.
Yeah, I do. Why isn't it completed up to today? Wait till he gets to the mic, Karen, that way we can get it on.
Yes?
Why is it still not completed?
Um, you know, I still, I went to go rent the thing, the pole driver, just the other day and they're out of them down in, where was it? It was in Stockton, the cat rental place. They had just run out of them, they told me.
Okay. Okay, is there any further questions for him? If not, I'm going to take public comment at this time. Do you have anything else you want to throw at us?
I mean, that's about, that's about it. It was, I wasn't given a complete deadline or else I really would have had it done by that deadline. I had other things doing at the farm. I do know this is a big thing and that's why I've intended to get it done now and?
Well, it is a really big thing and what concerns? And what concerns me and what has concerned me in the past when we've had appellants before us is that the deadline to get the fence up was June 30th, 2016. So that was a year and a half ago. And then when code compliance comes out a year and a half later and says to you, we probably need to get the fence up. And they don't give you a firm deadline, I'd have panicked and had that fence done in two days. But I'm just saying, and I understand you've run into some issues, but the problem is you're a year and a half past the date even without code compliance coming in. So that's what's working against you right here, is that the deadline was June 30th, 2016. And the responsibility falls on the registrant to comply with the urgency ordinance. Code compliance is only going out there to say this is good, give them their, give them their registration. They're not going out there to tell you how to do your job. You're supposed to be the one knowing how to do that. That's the problem that we're faced with here. And we have an urgency ordinance before us that we have to rule on. If we could rule on compassion, it'd be a whole different story, but we're stuck with a different book to rule on. So let me see what public comment is and then we'll, if there's anything there, you'll be able to have a chance to come back and do rebuttal.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there any public comment? No, okay, so I'll close public comment and I'm assuming there's no rebuttal from you, Peter, or there is?
No, I don't have anything else.
And do you have anything further you want to say because you get one last shot at it? Okay, all right, then we're going to close the hearing and bring it back for deliberation.
Okay, um, I'll start.
Okay.
With respect to the posting issue. I don't think that that violation's been proven by the evidence. There was no posting on January 31 or in November. But there is no evidence that there were any live medical cannabis plants there in January or November. And what has to be posted is the cultivation area, which is defined to mean that portion of the cultivation site containing live medical cannabis plants. There weren't any. And the testimony is that during the period of time that he did have live medical cannabis plants there, he did have a post. And since there were no visits by code compliance between the, the two dates, January and November, there is no evidence to contradict what Mr. Salmon has told us. The fencing is a different issue. It's, it's clear that there was not a fence there during the time, a complete fence there during the time that he was cultivating and there were plants there. That's been admitted. Fence still isn't complete. The citation was January 31. The email was February 6, in which to begin, still not done. Should have been done by June 30th of 2016. And there was more than enough time to get this taken care of. So that's my view of it.
I agree with Kelly. The, the sign, I agree, it, there was no plants at the time that the signs were. You had a violation to the sign. But the fencing, makes me sick to my stomach, you didn't have a fence up when you were growing. The fencing does not only protect you, it's to protect the county's children. That's how I look at the fencing. You had no way to stop minors from going up to your property and getting their hands on marijuana. It's still not, everybody in the county has a hard time putting up a fence, you are not the only person. I also know that the place in Stockton is not the only place to rent that equipment. I don't think you have a good enough excuse for not having a fence.
I agree with that result. I would point out that there, there was a posting in, in January, but the deficiency was it didn't have reflective tape around it. But that's neither here nor there and I, I agree with your approach to the case. And I would vote to deny the appeal.
Okay, so I pretty much already stated my position, so I think what I'd like to do is go to the reading of the recommendation, please.
I guess first a question. Commissioner Rooster, are you suggesting that we eliminate the first finding for denial?
Yes.
As the consensus of the commission, that we delete number one?
I have one other suggestion on the resolution.
Of course.
On page two, under the evidence, it says the cultivation area was found to be fenced with bailing wire. Bailing, sp- B-A-I-L-I-N-G, that's, that's like when you're bailing water out of a boat. You don't need two I's.
That was put there especially to see if the rancher and the group would catch it.
Checking on that farmer to see if he knows what bailing wire is. Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution 2018-001 as amended, denying appeal 2016-880, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny application 2016-880.
As amended.
So moved.
Second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, who?
Okay, and this action is final, this appeal to the board of supervisors within fifteen calendar days.
Are you? Yes. Okay, the next hearing, so we've got ten minutes to noon, but the next one is requesting a continuance. So if it's okay with the commissioners, I would like to continue on. We can wrap up our day and not have to take an hour lunch. Everybody's good? Does anybody need to have a ten minute break before we go forward?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next hearing and who's presenting?
That would be me again.
Okay.
And as you indicated, there is a request for continuance on this. It was received via email on January 4th and it's within your discretion to grant the continuance. And maybe the, maybe the appellant here is to explain the reason for that and lobby.
Can you please come to the mic?
Yes. We need a continuance.
I need you to state your name for the record.
Excuse me?
State your name for the record.
My name is Chris Gibbels. I'm Daniel Gibbels' brother. He had to step out of state for business.
Okay.
On January 10th, we, it was yesterday, we contacted the water board and the agency have not completed the application, so many.
I just need to interrupt for one second. Is he speaking as a public comment or is he speaking as a representative?
As, represented as my brother.
Does he have permission to be a representative? What is your first name, I'm sorry?
My name is Christopher Gibbels.
I'm just looking for clarity, I'm sorry.
He talked to somebody this morning in this.
I'm okay with you speaking, I just wanted for the record, make sure we have clarity as to what your position is in speaking here today.
Were you authorized by your brother to represent him, speak for him at this hearing?
Yes, I was.
Okay, then we can keep going and I apologize for interrupting, I just have to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you. For, for the water board, at the time of the agency did not have our application complete and he would like, and he would like to look into it more, the, the water board. And the heavy machine operator said that he would be able to, after the new year and when he, when the ground was more wet, we would have, we are awaiting his call. Everything else is complete. So it's with the water board and with the, for the, for the machine work we did, we need to get approved for that. We just need a little bit more time. And he says by February 22nd would be great for another hearing.
Okay.
That's okay.
So if I understand that your, your brother's not asking for continuance in order to get legal counsel, he's asking just to wrap a few things up.
Yeah, you know, we're still waiting for the water board to get back to us and we're still waiting for the machine work, for the gentleman to come when it's okay to do it.
And are you and your brother confident that by the 22nd, this is going to happen?
Yes, 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 that's the only things we have to do and we've been working hard to get it done, so.
Well, I'm, I'm confused because I don't see anything in the file here that suggests that your application was denied based on a problem with the water board.
That's what I'm understanding. I believe it was for, for the dirt work, for the, for the machine, but, and something with the, I went over it with him and that's what he said, so.
What, what we have in this, this is unfair for us to say, well, you should know all this.
It's, it's.
Because you are not he.
You know what, I know, we've got completely different issues going on here, which is fine. I think what I would like to do is, he submitted for his continuance in time. And I think that since he did, we knew he wasn't going to be here, he doesn't have an attorney representing. He followed the rules, he, he applied on time. I think I'd like to just grant the continuance instead of getting into all the particulars with him and he's not.
I would just.
I agree because I don't think that.
Well, I understand we're on the continuance, but I, he was speaking about the water board as a reason for continuing it and I wasn't getting that because the water board has nothing to do with the case, as far as I can tell.
If we grant a continuance, I really recommend that you tell your brother to look at just what the grounds are given for the denial and make sure that as he's getting things in order for the 22nd, that those are the things he's looking at. Because we don't plan to be adding, I assume that the planning department doesn't plan to be adding any further grounds to this denial, is that correct?
Well, we don't typically do that, although it has happened when we've discovered through the course of our review of the appeal that there is other grounds for denial. But that's not something that we've determined at this point in time.
Okay, so anyhow, because it, it sounds as if he might be putting in a whole lot of work on things that right now we're not concerned with.
I'm sorry, I just got back from a trip and I wrote down in Nebraska and it's just, I'm just catching up.
Yeah, so you're in, you're in a strange circuit.
Well, I understand that the reason for a continuance is that your, your brother is back in Chicago, is that right?
Uh, he's dealing with some, uh, we, we're working with getting more funding and stuff, so he's business, business out, so.
Well, I thought his request for a continuous was because he was helping your aging parents transition to a next, a new stage in their life.
We were bringing an RV out, it broke down in Nebraska and he's dealing with that, so.
Okay.
So I mean, it's, we're transitioning, bringing my dad out here with his RV and it broke down in Nebraska and he's dealing with that and I, I came, I, I'm the one representing him right now too.
So when do you want to get it continued to?
February 22nd, he asked, I believe.
So the request said my preference would be the 22nd of February, so I could be completed with the water board. The 25th of January, I could be available, however, that is my second choice.
Okay, all right, I don't have a problem granting a continuance.
In his, in his letter, he does state that he has gotten everything corrected except for the water board. So, and I'm, I don't have any issues going ahead with the continuance because he filed within proper timeframes. So is, I need to go and see if there's anybody in the public that would like to comment on this, please? Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this one? No? Okay, then I will be, any rebuttals on anything that was said? I've, there was nothing said, so there's nothing to rebuttal.
I'm in favor of the continuance to the 22nd.
Is that a motion?
I'll make it a motion.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. And that was date certain to the 22nd?
Yes.
Okay, you got that?
22nd?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know what?
That was good, thank you.
Okay, so the agenda was crafted some time ago and the next item is F for informational items? I think there's a little bit of information Peter should share with us.
Well, I was going to do that under, under planning director reports.
Okay, so then there are no informational items to discuss, there's no study session. And how about my commissioners, any reports from you?
I'd like to make a report, just recognizing the services of Paul Grove through this whole procedure that I felt that he was a very persistent and I, I sensed that he was a sensitive dealer with the public and with applicants. And I very much appreciated his ability to read pictures that were not always terribly easy to read. And I think the county votes him, or owes him a vote of thanks and recognition for a job well done.
I would agree and that was very nicely said, thank you. Okay, anything else?
All you, Peter.
Yes, it is.
All right, so yesterday, the board wrapped up many long days of hearings with a vote to adopt the ban ordinance. It was a three-two vote, although they did direct staff to come back in, sometime in the near future to consider putting both the ban and the planning commission's recommendation. Although that's, the, the director's come back to discuss the possibility of putting one or more measures on the ballot, let me put it that way.
We're not entirely clear yet what version of the planning commission recommendation is, we're being asked to brought back and I guess I'll have to speak with supervisor Olivera about what his intentions were on that part.
As long as it's not us rewriting it, I don't really care.
Yeah, I, I understood his motion to be that the, the original version went up, which it only had a bullet point.
We had several originals though.
So are we talking, I mean, so original meaning before it was sent back from the board with the?
That, that's what.
For the second time, okay.
Yeah.
I'll double check, but, okay.
But it was.
Yeah, it, it was unclear, we, we'll need to clarify that because he also talked about other things. Anyway, that's sort of, at this point, it's still, there's been no action. It was just a direction to bring something back on a future agenda. In order to, to make it on to a June ballot that has to be done soon, I think the final action would have to be taken December or February 20th in order to meet the ballot requirements, to go through all the process that the elections office has to do. And there's many steps that county council and we will need to do to, to get it to that point. So there's a lot of work still in the next couple of weeks.
Ms. Stedfeld made it very clear that they're like all stop, pulling all stops and everything else. The priority right now is to do the research necessary to figure out how to meet the, that directive and get everything in order for the.
Okay, while you're doing that, can we pull out all stops and get the general plan done? That's why I'm here.
So the ban takes effect thirty days from yesterday, barring a referendum or litigation where an injunction is filed. That would not happen within thirty days, so the only thing that would stop that would be if a referendum is filed. The urgency ordinance provides for ninety days to come into compliance. So anyone that is registered or still has an application pending would still be able to cultivate until ninety days after the effective date, so about a hundred and twenty days from yesterday. What that means as far as our workload, we still have to sit down and discuss. There's all kinds of questions and issues as far as the fees, continued processing, that we just don't know the answers to yet. It is a relief to have a decision made and, but I don't believe that it's over yet.
So can you, for the record, just for the public, explain what a referendum is and what it would do?
Well, it is a, if members of the public gather enough signatures, it is similar to an initiative, but what it does, it basically, it requires that the voters confirm an action of the board of supervisors. So it's different in, from an initiative in that it doesn't initiate legislation. It basically confirms legislation that already has taken place. If a referendum is filed, it stays the action of that ordinance or the decision that was made until the voters confirm it.
Okay.
Who, who files the referendum?
Uh, I'm not exactly sure, but citizens, voters, it requires a certain number of signatures of registered voters based on the number of voters in the last. based on the number of voters in the last, I think gubernatorial election.
Okay, so there's two things that may be going on. One is, a group of voters may put a referendum together with a requisite number of signatures, and that would stay the operation of the ban ordinance.
Correct.
The other thing that's happening is, there's been a motion apparently approved by a majority of the board to try to get the ban ordinance and some version of a regulation before the voters in the June election, is that right?
It wasn't actually a motion and a, a vote, but it was a, a poll taken, it was direction for staff to bring back an action in order to have that occur.
They couldn't put, they couldn't make a motion, it wasn't agendized, so, the poll is, it sounds as if they're going to have us, the county basically sponsor its own version of an initiative by asking the voters to choose between two. So it's possible there could be three or more items on the ballot.
So, so when is the date by which a referendum has to be put together?
30 days.
30 days.
So they have to have the signatures within 30 days?
Yes.
For, for the voters, yes.
I'm, I'm confusing two different things.
For, for a voter...
Referendum.
Referendum. The signatures need to be collected within 30 days and filed with the county.
Okay, now with respect to the action by the board, the polling that they directed...
That doesn't require signatures.
When, when does that have to be done to meet?
Well, it, in order to meet the June primary deadline, the final action, there's two actions that the board has to take. The final action will have to be done before February 20th.
So, it's my understanding that the referendum also, depending on if they file on the last day, which is that 30-day deadline, the election has to be held on that as a special election, and it would be before the June 5th election. It would fall somewhere in the timeframe of May, depending on the number of days and when the date they file it. So, from what I've been told, and nothing's verified, but it would be fun to get that information for the next board meeting. If they file the referendum, depending on what day they file it, the Elections Office has a certain number of days in which to hold that election, and it would end up being before the June 5th, so, there you go.
I, I believe it's not less than 88 days after it's filed.
So, that puts it before June 5th, right?
Well, they, they could, they could, they could do it in June 5th. It, it has to be not less than 88 days.
Is that right? Oh, that's interesting, okay.
Fairly certain that's what...
Well, none of us are the election officials, so we're just guessing here, I'm not gonna make anything firm on those statements. Okay, and then my next question, you know it's coming. The general plan, we had discussed it, the potential of looking at it in February, is this gonna mess things up and throw our general plan into la-la land again? 'Cause you're gonna be busy trying to deal with whatever a supervisor's direction is.
Since I won't be writing ordinance language, working with Julie to write ordinance language, I'll make that clear. Because Julie has done a lot of work on that, and I've helped out on that.
And we commend you both for that, thank you.
But, I now have about 300 pages worth of draft EIR text that I need to review that I've had for several weeks I have not been able to get to because of cannabis. Once that is done, then the consultants will be able to put together the admin draft, EIR, which would be reviewed internally with me, County Council, and our outside council, to make sure it's ready for re-lease to the public.
And that's a 45-day public review?
45 days is the minimum amount of time. Typically with a general plan EIR, 60 days is what's usual, and so I would recommend that we do it for 60 days, and in fact, I could make that decision, I think that's just appropriate to do so.
Has anybody recommended that we send you to the Bahamas with those 300 pages?
I'm taking up to Siskiyou County this weekend, so... My, my goal is to get that done as quickly as possible, get it back to the, the consultant, so they can wrap up their work on the admin draft, and we can get it reviewed internally and get it out there to the public. So, by the end of the month is probably a push, by February definitely. Well, I don't say definitely, but that's my goal.
Got that, Colleen, paying attention. I know, right? Okay, so is there anything further?
That's it for now.
That's enough. You agreed with me, huh? All right, then I say we adjourn the meeting. And we'll be back on February?
Eight, no, January 25th.
I have to come back? Okay.